Rob, would you be able to take the role?
Yeah.
Steve? Uh, Gerardo?
Here.
Daphne?
Here.
Uh, Krista?
Here.
Rebecca?
Here.
Uh, May Just?
There's a.
John?
Here.
And so here, and Nathan is at the front?
Yes.
All right, we have the forum. Uh, first on our agenda is our trustee oath of office. Uh, for administering the oath, our Vice President will administer the oath. Okay. Okay, so, um. You can go.
Yeah. Do not let anyone else.
Repeat after me. I.
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 Here.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Waukegan Public Library Board to the best of my ability.
Of the Waukegan Public Library Board to the best of my ability. I affirm.
Congratulations. Uh, next up is admitting remote attendance. We have no remote board members for this meeting. And then, uh, public comments. And we have public comments, uh, from our friends.
Um, how's everybody doing this evening? It's nice to see so many friends here. Um, my name is Sandy Sherwood, and I am on the Friends Board. And some of the activities that we are doing right now as we're talking about our annual membership. So if you're not in front of the library, it would be wonderful if we could get the entire board as a Friends member. Um, by members. And you are invited to our annual membership program on Sunday, May 5th, from 2:00 to 4:00. We will elect the new board members. We will have treats to eat. And we have a speaker from the Historical Society speaking on Waukegan women past and present. So we're looking forward to that. We are also trying to see how we can help, um, if the new van needs some parts that we can afford inside, putting it together. So hopefully, we can help with that also. We discussed having one book sale, and that will be in May. So many organizations only have one. And we talked back and forth about it. And because we do not have as many members that are active, it comes down to the few of us who are doing everything. So you know how that goes sometimes. So if you would like to be on the Friends Board also, just text me, and I will put your name, and we're all set. Um, does anybody have any questions about what is going? Oh, I have to tell you. Our first family concert, which was on a Wednesday night, from 5:30 to 6:30, we had 53 in attendance. And some of those were families. So I was very happy, because I was hoping for at least 20. And to get 53, that's, I think, an excellent number. So if we can get families on board joining the Friends, rather than just seniors, um, and nothing gets seniors, which, since I'm one. Um, so please, if you know anybody that would like to be on the board, I'd love to talk to them also. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, due to technology, and, uh, we're going to move around our agenda unless there's any objection, to start with our audit presentation. Mark is here with us, um, virtually to present, um, the audit.
Hello, can you hear me?
Quiet, sorry.
Are you able to hear me? Okay, try that. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, it's quiet, but.
I'll try to, I'll try to speak up if this is better.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you for having me on tonight. I am on to present the results of the audit for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2023. Um, in order to expedite this, there's quite a lot of information contained in an audit. I'll, I'll, I'll be summarizing and highlighting the key information in the audit report. Uh, so I'll share my screen as well. So what I have, uh, presented here is the annual financial report for the Waukegan Public Library for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2023. And I'll just take you through a couple of key highlights of the report and, uh, acknowledge any, highlight the audit procedures that were performed. Within the annual financial report, uh, probably what most individuals reading a set of audited financial statements are looking for is the opinion. Uh, so that is found on page number one of the annual financial report. Uh, and in the first two paragraphs is where you can find the opinion on these audited financial statements. Uh, I am pleased to be able to present a clean, unmodified opinion on the library's financial statements for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2023. That is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. And we're able to provide this opinion based on the procedures that we performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. There is quite a bit of information that is required in order to complete our testing in accordance with those standards and to be able to issue the opinion that we have. So I, I want to thank everyone that participated in the audit. Throughout the course of the audit, there was a lot of information that was requested, and everything was provided to us on a timely basis uh, and allowed us to complete our procedures without any issues. In, following the independent auditor's report, uh, the basic financial statements begin with the statement of net position. That's on page number four. The statement of net position and the following statement, the statement of activities, is presented on a full accrual basis of accounting. So unlike what you're used to seeing on a month-to-month basis, uh, this information on a full accrual basis of accounting incorporates the long-term assets and long-term liabilities of the library. Those long-term items, uh, are the capital assets net of accumulated depreciation, the library's OPEB liability, and, uh, the library's portion of the IMRF liability, as well as the associated deferred outflows and inflows, uh, of resources or timing items related to those IMRF and OPEB balances as calculated by the actuaries. The statement of activities is the income statement for the library on the full accrual basis of accounting. A key highlight here to note is the change in that position. The library's net position increased over the previous fiscal year, uh, by 377,000. So that was an improvement in the net position on that full accrual basis of accounting. Uh, these are full accrual financial statements you're only going to see once a year in the annual financial report. This is not used in your regular, uh, month-to-month reporting or decision-making. Uh, what you're more used to seeing is the following, uh, beginning on page six, the balance sheet for the library's general fund. And then the associated, uh, on page eight, you'll find this statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the library's general fund. The balance sheet and the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance is presented on a modified accrual basis of accounting, so that, uh, unlike the first two statements I covered, these, these statements do not include those long-term assets and liabilities. Uh, so a couple of key takeaways from here, you'll see the library's fund balance at April 30th, 2023, uh, 4.3 million. The large port, largest portion of that fund balance is broken into three categories as presented here. There's a portion related to non-spendable items or, uh, items that are not in liquid form, so prepaid assets. There's a portion of the fund balance that, that is assigned for capital improvements. The assignment is essentially an earmarking of a portion of that fund balance, uh, intended to be spent on future capital improvements for the library. And the remaining unassigned portion of fund balance is available for, uh, funding the library's operations. So the large majority of the library's fund balance at April 30th, uh, 3.7 million was available for funding the library's operations. The statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, uh, is presented here with a budget versus actual presentation. As you can see here, the library's fund balance increased for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2023, by 551,000. That was an improvement in the fund balance over the previous fiscal year. Also here, you can see in a summarized format, the library's revenues exceeded budgeted revenues for the fiscal year, and the expenditures were below what was budgeted for expenditures for the fiscal year, which resulted in that improvement in the fund balance with the revenues exceeding expectations and expenditures being below what was budgeted for. Following this statement, you'll find, uh, the footnote disclosures, which I'm not going to go into much detail on, but I'll just highlight that within the footnote disclosures, you can find information on the library's capital asset activities, debt activity, uh, as well as a summary of the library's significant accounting policies, and some information on the, uh, library's IMRF and OPEB, uh, or other post-employment benefit plan obligations. And then additionally, following the footnote disclosures, there are some, uh, detailed schedules which show the library's IMRF, uh, funding for the last eight fiscal years. That's the amount of data that's available. The schedule will be building up to 10 years of information, as well as the other post-employment benefit plan information that's available currently for five years. This is also a schedule that will be building up to 10 years. Will present historical information of the library's OPEB, uh, liability for up to 10 years of information once that's available. And then lastly, there's some additional detailed, uh, budget versus actual schedules, uh, to show a, a bit more detail level of, uh, the revenue versus, of budget versus actual, as well as the library's expenditures, uh, budget versus actual on a little bit more detail level than was presented in the basic financial statements. Any questions on the annual financial report?
No question. No. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, were there any other questions that arose as related to the audit procedures in general, or, uh, any of the library's reporting?
Any other questions or comments from any board members? No? All right.
Yeah. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I'm always available to answer any questions that do arise if you are reviewing the report or just have any other uh, general questions as it pertains to the audit or to financial statement reporting. So if anything comes up after the meeting, please feel free to reach out to me through Michelle or directly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can come back to that motion, but, uh, first, we can, uh.
Do you want to do anything before we? No, do that first.
Yeah, we do that first. We can do that on your, top of the boat on your, uh, new business.
The team already?
There's a lot of.
That's just, okay, so the, our version, like, you can move the slides this way, but that's clean. Okay. It's just how the, how our meeting works.
Okay. I just have a little intro, so whoever's first, your first, Amy?
Um. Okay. Um, in the spring and summer of 2023, the library worked with a consultant to develop a new strategic plan as the previous one had ended in 2020. Staff, trustees, community partners, and residents were asked to share needs, interests, and ideals for the library in a variety of ways. Through talk sessions, surveys, and focus groups, we worked steadily to develop the plan we're presenting tonight. Everyone who took time to reflect and share during this process has already made a positive impact on the community, as without you, we would not have been able to dream big nor come together as a group to realize that dream as we move forward. So thank you all for taking that first step with us. I particularly want to thank the Consultant Selection Committee, Trustees Martin, Gordillo, and Rogers, staff members Amy and Patrick, and I was very pleased to work on that with all of you, and hire Amanda Stanford from Fast Forward Libraries. But right now, we have the big reveal of, uh, the great staff that worked on the Strategic Plan Committee. We reviewed data, we discussed, we distilled the feedback, we had a room full of Post-it notes that we talked about and organized and prioritized. Um, it was a lot of fun. So Amy, Annalisa, Isaac, Jennifer, Cindy, Marilyn, Carla, Sam, and myself, um, we're really excited to share this. So, the first slide is that the library is really proud to assert that our vision is to be a place to gather, discover, and grow, and that our actions and activities affirm that we support our community by connecting everyone to information, materials, and experiences that foster a love of reading, learning, and exploration. So take it away, crew.
Hi, everyone. So our first, oh, thank you, losing sticky notes. Our first strategic direction is a vibrant community engagement and responsive services. So our goal 1.1 is evolve outreach services and expand collaborative partnerships. We can do this by having a partnership plan, engage old and new partners, and expand mobile services. I don't know if you all heard, but thanks to Great Lakes and consumers, we were able to get our new van. Me and my, um, Hector, we've been working really hard. Um, later on, Tiffany will show you all a picture of our mock, what it's going to look like. But because of that, we are able to expand mobile services, meaning we'll be at Parks More, we're able to go to all the schools, we're able to expand home deliveries, and we'll just, with the van, people will know we are the library. So having that, you know, will put us out there, the library's here, it's going through the community, we are here for everyone. Um, and we will be able to increase awareness of services via local businesses, advertisement, and increase in outreach opportunities. Um, we just launched a new e-newsletter that went out to over, um, I believe it's like over 32,000 patrons. I have an email in our service. Um, we're able to get our new e-news, so being able to get back to people, being able to connect with them, being able to tell them that our services are here via e-news or via new advertisement methods such as paid ads online and things like that. We're able to also, um, by our new partnership plan, we are able to include marketing strategy, budget, and also increase, um, staff participation by also having more staff go out in the community, speaking about the library, being able to make those connections with all, but all and everyone in Waukegan and surrounding areas.
All right. Uh, second part of strategic direction one is going to be enhance communications to inform and inspire library use. So we'll be coming up with evaluation guidelines for our programs and services. Uh, coming up also creative marketing strategies. The goal is to make at least two per year, uh, to inform people in the community about upcoming events, uh, certain new, new services and so on. Uh, we're, we also want to redesign the library website. What we got is fine, but we, we don't like to make it a lot more user-friendly and also make it easier for people to connect to what's going on here through it. Uh, and finally updating, um, develop comprehensive readers advisory services to, uh, promote, to promote items in the library for reading, uh, or listening or viewing. All right. All right, so, um, with this strategic direction, we want to make sure that we go back to our school outreach events um, and also focus on the data we're collecting, have collected in the past, and we will continue to collect to make sure we have the community as our center. Um, making sure we attend to their, you know, basic needs, interests, academic goals, um, especially start focusing on small businesses or those that are taking interest in that. So we really don't have any kind of limits, and we want to make sure our patrons understand that and know that if we don't have the answers, we can connect to someone that does. Okay? We want to make sure we're focusing on diversity, um, equity, and inclusion, offering bilingual reading programs across all ages, um, and to hopefully lead to more engagement and more participation. Um, and also making sure our programming is supportive of all groups. And we're also working on working more together as a team, so like, creating more programs that kind of cross across departments, um, to make sure that we can deliver this.
Strategic direction two is all about modernizing our spaces to make them accessible, user-friendly, and welcoming. A big first push of this is to remodel the lower level of the library, which has not been touched since the mid 1990s when it was initially designed. Most of you have seen and are familiar with the architectural drawings of the new youth space, which will refresh and revitalize the main area of the youth department seamlessly blending it with the sooner-to-be updated ELC. For quick reference, the ELC isn't explicitly mentioned in your strategic planning documents, because it's already in the works before the start of the strategic plan. So it's not forgotten, it's just sort of ahead of this plan. Um, some of the additions that you'll see from the renderings of the youth, youth space will include study rooms that are larger and have more technology, more similar to the study rooms on this main level. Um, interactive stations for older kids that include learning, gaming, STEM, hydroponic stations, and more spaces for dropping crafts and activities around the space, kind of focused towards older kids. And another area for improvement and modernization in the space is to right-size our shelving and display heights, like literally right-size for the age of the people who will be using them, ensuring that staff have good sightlines all around the department and at the entrance, and that bilingual signage is clear, easy to read, and indicative of the offerings in each section. The youth space project will be the first step in a revitalization of the entire lower level, which will eventually include a teen space and a maker space. The teen space will be directly across from the youth space, serving grade six to 12, and incorporating existing collections from various locations around the library, cozy seating areas, collaborative study furniture, and interactive stations for video gaming, technology use, and a staff service desk. The maker space will include emerging and existing technology and equipment such as sewing machines, embroidery machines, vinyl cutters, glass etching equipment, laser cutters, 3D printers, and more. Dream big, right? We already have money for some of it. The space will be for all ages with an emphasis probably mostly on ages 10 and up and families. Um, although not the most exciting part of revitalizing our spaces, we also have engaged our architects to develop, uh, comprehensive capital needs assessment. This will ha- help finance facilities and admin staff create a long-term budget plan to address ongoing structural and facilities needs of the library. And I just pulled some pictures of like rusty pipes for your viewing pleasure here. Um, we also have already flipped some spaces within the library to give the friends of the library a more useful space to sort, organize, and house their collection of items for their book sales. Additionally, a beautiful new fixture has been added to the lobby for their ongoing sale. Um, we also have a lot of exciting ideas that we hope to implement in the next few years, like remodeling the lower-level bathrooms in conjunction with the larger remodel plan, perhaps purchasing a mobile kitchen for food programs and can, creating some new spaces on the main level for adults, perhaps adding more study rooms, adding in a quiet area, developing a partnership for a satellite office of a local business or nonprofit, maybe designing a genealogy nook or room by moving around and rearranging existing spaces, and by reimagining the old preference office room, which is in the back corner of the building.
So for, um, the children's area and the whole library, um, new picture books, I mean, uh, new signs that are large and colorful, welcoming, informative, um, bilingual, and engaging. And then for the children's area, the picture book shelving, um, we want to have that to have face-out shelving, um, have books chosen by topic. Um, we want, it's easier for patrons to browse when the books are, um, by topic, and, um, the spine label gives the information on the cover. Most patrons search picture books by topic. Um, for example, you can see where it has the picture of the book. That's what the label would look like, it would have animals as the topic, and then it have pets as the subtopic. And then most libraries that do this kind of shelving, I see a 20% circulation increase. Um, we're hoping to do a cafe area with seating, um, more comfortable seating, open welcome area to enjoy snacks, offer ability to purchase food and drinks. Um, we want to have, uh, make wheelchairs and walkers available for use in the library near the entrance. This way, uh, people could possibly leave their own personal devices at home and not have to bring them to the library, um, help them an easier way to get around the library. Um, we're going to offer a telehealth kiosk. Um, it's a safe, private, uh, virtual medical care. And on patrons who find it difficult to travel to their doctor can access virtual medical care. Um, or if they don't have reliable internet at home, they can do that at the library.
This is Isaac's part, so just bear with me here if we had a conflict. Um, so one of the, um, parts of the facilities and modernizing, um, our spaces is our technology. Um, so one of the things we're looking into is transitioning from expensive traditional copper lines on our phones to VoIP, which is over internet phones. There's various benefits for the library. First, it's an opportunity to reduce phone expenses, um, by up to potentially 50% on our monthly bills. Um, additionally, the flexibility of VoIP enables staff to work from anywhere, you can connect to like cell phones and home lines and other, ensuring that calls can be answered, or even if we're doing outreach events. Um, the system also provides enhanced features such as receiving voicemails via email and also transcribes. Um, it organizes like the queue of voicemails, and it's really, really interesting. It's also much easier on the backend to like add people's names and extensions, um, as like staff changes happen. So the adoption of VoIP contributes a lot to also environmental sustainability, because it's not using that quite copper wire. Um, so it reduces the carbon footprint, and, um, it really definitely, that part of it aligns with the library's commitment to environmental responsibility as well. Um, another part of our technology, um, growth is that we are joining CCS, which will offer invaluable resources and opportunities for member libraries, including our interlibrary loan services, um, facilitating seamless sharing among all of our patrons. Will be part of a network of 31, um, library institutions, so enhancing access to our vast array of materials. Additionally, CCS provides a platform for library staff engagement and networking through a lot of different staff committees and focus groups, which really facilitates an exchange of ideas and a lot of collaboration amongst libraries and. An exchange of ideas and a lot of collaboration amongst libraries in our area. Um, it also provides extensive support, learning opportunities, group sessions, custom tailoring. We're getting a lot of our own training. In person, virtual, like dedicated and tailored to our staff and our, what we need. Um, so these resources ensure ongoing learning and assistance for libraries across all of our institutions, um, and really going to be helpful. Um, one of the other things we're most excited about is our um translation tablets from Translate Live. They're going to be a vers- versatile tool. That will aid library staff in assisting um speakers who speak languages other than English and really like over fifty or sixty different languages. Um, and also help patrons who are deaf or mute. There's also like enough component to um use A S L with these devices. Um, so we're really excited about these and beyond the confines of the libraries, we'll be able to take these on the go also to outreach. Um, events and we will have them at every service desk um to really seamlessly integrate interactions between staff and patrons. Um, enhancing accessibility and inclusivity within the library environment. Um, we have ordered four tablets, one for each of the public service desks and one for the branch. Um, they're on order and then once they're here, we have already um started the process for receiving training for all. Staff who are going to be involved in using them. So it's something we're, we're very, very excited about and coming very soon.
And John. Um, so um strategic direction three is a strong and sustainable organization. Um, goal three point one is to ops- optimize organizational culture. So the library is on strong footing with very engaged and informed and participatory board. A new administration team and a very dedicated staff and we're all really excited to put the ideas and activities of the strategic plan in place. Um, to attain our goals, we really first need to identify service areas that require additional staff. Jennifer has already mentioned mobile services, Amy's mentioned that maker space. We also need to really um. Solidify and create robust school outreach services and um get ourselves a teen library. And so those are really things that we knew. That we had to identify um from the get go. We're also going to work within our departments and as a leadership team to develop more robust cross-training. Um, mentoring and shadowing programs between departments or staff who want to um work with department managers to build skills. And um, really give staff opportunities for public speaking, handling difficult situations, leading committees. So that they can get that practice and facilitation in project management and grant, grant writing and find ways. To connect with each one of them to see what their goals are and to support that career development. Um, we've launched our new committees for the fiscal year and we have had. About eight standing committees every year. They work on our staff development day. They um help provide different kinds of um staff sunshine committee activities. And this year we um had staff come forward and really identify and say. I think we need this committee too. I want to see an accessibility committee so we can focus across the library on. Our spaces, our signage, our website, um, our furniture and really make sure all of those things are accessible. We've had them come forward about green initiatives and try to figure out how we can find. Those cost savings, the energy savings, um, and and work together. Um, to build on activities that the city is doing and we have joined, um, have a representative on the city's green team. Website redesign and wayfinding and making the library accessible, convenient. Easy to use and navigate has been on our radar and um being able to focus on that in a cross. Departmental way is really important. So those are key focuses that we ensure that the library is safe, comfortable, convenient and welcoming for all.
Another goal, um, goal three point one in optimizing organizational culture. Is that we want to ensure that our patrons are valued and well-served. Um, part of that will be uh, training staff for veteran engagement with the public to be as welcoming as possible. We would also like to implement some patron appreciation ideas and some of those are branded giveaways, donuts or continuing. Things like the balloon arch that we had. Um, those are great for posting to social media, which enhances our social media presence. We also would like to solicit feedback, but would like to do it in a fun way for patrons. Um, some ideas that we had for that were uh question, posting a question of the day. They can read the question, use library sources to find the answer, write the answer on a slip and turn it in. Or we could do a question of the day where um it could be something fun, like if you could be the librarian, what would you change? Um, we could also have something that would interact with the patrons on. Maybe if they don't want to do a one-on-one, it would be a whiteboard with questions such as if you wrote a book, what would it be about? Or why are you visiting the library? Or wondering Wednesday, what are you wondering about? And just have them write it on the board. Um, so these are some of the ways that we could better connect with our patrons.
We're engaged too as a board, so I'm presenting our, uh, what we discussed from our committee, the whole meeting and priorly on our strategic plan. So the board, uh, we need to grow board engagement. And part of that is recruiting uh and retaining knowledgeable uh and engaged trustees. So that's a part about our board brand, our board appearance, how we appear and interact with the public. Um, so part of our action steps for that would be more engaging photos of us. How do we engage with the library? What programs or books do we check out? And telling a story about us as people, as board members to show that we're. People in um that engage with the community as well. Um, some other ways we can engage is using our social media. And having a monthly share out at our committee of the whole meetings on social media. And we need to improve our application as a board member. Um, it's and have some more information about the commitments. It takes to be a board member. What's the expectation and how does that connects to the goals and to our strategic plan? We also want to uh equip our board with more meaningful training opportunities. So that's identifying more training opportunities with the Illinois Library Association, other library associations and other groups. Um, that's about bringing speakers to retreats. And it's about partnering with uh nearby boards as a possibility or creating a buddy system within our board. Um, and it's aligning our expectations with the goals of like trustees. So trustees are in alignment with what they're doing. Um, other things that we need to do is strengthening uh connections. So that's um connections between board and staff and board and community. So it's identifying staff uh participation opportunities. So that could be staff events. Could we attend a staff meeting virtually possible? Because many of us, many staff meetings are during the day and many of us work during the day, so. There might be an opportunity to attend virtually. There might be other ways that we can engage. So it's starting to identify those way that we can. Gauge and intend staff events. And for the community, it's about building informal relationships. So we discussed informal office hours or I put on the slide on office hours. So ways that we can engage um in a more relaxed setting with the community, so they're willing to uh participate and give feedback. Thank you.
Okay, and uh goal three point three is to ensure sustainable funding. Um, that part of that is applying for grants and we currently have a staff committee dedicated to grant writing. The next important grant that we'll be applying to is the project next generation grant in spring of twenty twenty five. It's focused on educational technology programs for teens and can be up to forty thousand dollars. It'll be renewable each year and will supplement equipment and supplies and can also be used to hire mentors and additional staff. So if we had a maker space, it could supply a lot of those. Things. Um, we want to develop the work, study programs and internships and have had successful workers from youth build. And would like to expand that to similar college work-study programs. And then of course, the private foundation support. Uh, we'd like to continue to build relationships with the Schreiber, with Schreiber Philanthropy, F V, Lake County Community Foundation. And these are to support educational and health and wellness initiatives. And we have two exciting announcements. Drum roll please. The first one is that we are excited that the health kiosk funded by F V is on order and should be up and running by fall. And then the bigger announcement is that um. We are extremely excited to announce that we were granted a forty thousand dollar donation for the next three years by the Schreiber Foundation. I would, Schreiber Philanthropy, I'm sorry. Um, and this will allow the library to continue their initiatives as they transition from a formal grant to a formal grant process um with that foundation.
Thank you. Um, and then finally. While the library's budget is supported mostly by property taxes, we have really worked diligently this year to increase revenue through additional grants. Contract renegotiations, focused investments and improving building infrastructure. We want to ensure that needed and innovative programs and services are available for the public and we continue to build on these. But we also want to continue our forward momentum in supporting staff through increased conference attendance, networking opportunities. Tuition, support and more. We're also really thankful to have supportive partners in the Friends and the Foundation. They've had many successes this year from supporting the development of the sensory room, their ongoing book sale. Developing new programs and creating an annual fundraiser that started with the sensory room is going to continue with the maker space. And we hope to continue each year. So we really look forward to working with them and supporting their membership drive. Because the Friends and the Foundation are both in that same boat and building the capacity for them to continue to do good. I think there's a thank you here, any questions or comments, but we also again would love for your round of applause for our amazing committee. And really beyond um everybody in this room too, just great response to our different committees this year from. Grant writing to staff development, um, to accessibility, website redesign and can, to continue with the strategic plan. So the committee will continue to monitor and yay, and you can pass that around. So. Um, Jennifer and Hector have been working diligently on a design and bouncing it around. To various people. And so we've settled on something just at least to get out to our two funders. We got a thumbs up from um one and are waiting to hear back from the other and then we'll, we'll get it to the rap company. So. Thank you. We can stop the share of this. And. No?
Alright, uh, questions or comments from board members? I've already emailed you the稿.
I would like to uh say thanks to the committee for all of our hard work and knowing that we have jobs to do. That time you volunteered, you're trying to go through a great job. And it's nice to see the strategic plan moving forward from where I was a few years ago. So really appreciate everybody's work and the work that people are helping us. Great job.
Thank you. The mobile services. Plan, um, is this plan already written out with milestones? Like for that specific part?
No. Okay, we obtained the van and we need to work because that is a department that has a li- a more limited staff. And needs to be rebuilt. So we need to start with finding those opportunities um that are already existing to roll out the van to. Our parades, different community events and really start to use the schools and school outreach as. A big part of uh developing and planning out how that will grow.
Okay, um. Have you reached out to anyone yet? Like about any like opportunities for. Upcoming events or?
So about services, um, we have reached out with. And we've met with them talking about looking at libraries to learn what I did and that's just like the beginning. Um, they, the whole idea is to have like more like different organizations who are playing what the library is and how.
And yeah, and we really were waiting on the van for a year for it to be built and eventually shipped. Um, so. Right now too, we're working on internally seeing what the needs are and the regular use would be. To have that be a part of our calendaring system. So across departments, you can schedule its use. Um, making sure that we have a, a good listing in the H R department of everybody's driver's license and proof of insurance. And all of those things. So um, we do have a calendar of events that we use as a guide throughout the years. We, we already know of different parades and um Halloween and different park district events. So it's really trying to expand that out to what else that there are, what are the other needs?
And we definitely want to take Sandy up on our offer. We have also been investigating, um. The shelves with the tempat is kind of scoping out different vendors for the floor mats, the shelves. And how can we customize that? So it can be really robust. So we can use it for a. Computer training trip to the proficient job center. We could use it for a play in the park day. We could use it for. Going to school visits, loading it up with books for the parade. So just trying to find all of those kind of flexible ways that it could be used.
Uh, as far as the communication uh portion is, speaking of. The marketing strategy, strategy, I believe, or may have been another term for, um. Who specifically is going to be in charge of that? You often, um, do you have a plan for that already or have you been working on it as well?
So the library has not had a style guide in nineteen ninety and I think the last one I found was in two thousand and two. So I'm pretty much almost done with that. And the ones we need to be wrapped that up, the ones we rolled out to staff. Obviously, you're going to support, I'll do too. But all that is in the works and in the process.
And a lot of the marketing has to do too with, you know, wayfinding within the building. There are a lot of improvements to be made. Into shelving, to um having a floor plan at the elevators to give people a sense of where they are. To make their way around the building, to make sure that they're not only bilingual, but also in Braille, which was this. Requirement that we're not meeting in very many areas of emergency exit training. All of those things are rolled into that wayfinding piece and you know, a lobby we define. What if seeing when they first come in, how welcoming is it? How do they get their bearings? To make their way around the building. And those are all things that we've been talking about and identifying and going through the Illinois state standards. And making those checklists. It's just really working on that programmatic plan and that timeline. What's your time nearing to create the style then? Oh, we're all, it.
It's completed. It's just in the last edit.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm always full of questions. Who's your point of contact at this?
The face department. I go through their monthly meetings and then someone works at the district here too. And I meet them and okay, you know, so and so connecting with so and so. But uh, I connected with the face department every month. They're actually hosting their next meeting here at the library.
Coming to Tane Field yet?
Yes.
Okay, you probably shouldn't reach out to her too. Um. As far as the board engagement, I do have to comment on that. Um, I don't know where I was. It was probably before I moved up here, um. The library had given notice at the entrance that there was board meeting. So I think that would be a very constructive idea to have some type of big sign and have a board meeting.
Oh, it's always there. It's always posted. It is posted on that and it's there in front when you walk in. It's.
I miss it sometimes when it's broadcasted. So maybe, I don't know.
I gotta look at it.
Been there for thirty years. It's a lot.
Yeah, our our agenda's posted and that is kind of, you know, wordy because it's to try to keep his attention. It is on our calendar. So maybe, you know, there could be a slide that runs through. Our um TV screen and things like that to to make it more noticeable. And it is in our, you know, the back page burners letter and that is.
And right. Um, yeah, I like I said, sometimes it depends on the person. I know means sometimes it's hard to be, I know could apply maybe more typically. I did have a question about the old office space. I know you all were considering to be like to have it for rental. Have you all also maybe, well, let me propose that it also be considered that maybe it could be an office, like a business center. You know, because that front area gets pretty contested by, you know, that information desk. And so if there's a set size place for it. It seems like that would be good where we just dedicate copy and and faxing and maybe that more than work those standard situations that are.
Yeah, there's a lot of options for that room for there, the um. Uh, why can't I think of it? My profiches or when we we develop this area too, because um to have a. Kind of closed off room like we have in the back could also be one itself well to. One-on-one technology meetings, or if we have a social worker or other kinds of um offshoots for that, where people get specialized help or. Immigration assistance or different kinds of business assistance that we build the, you know, adult services outreach activities too. So, yep. I, it can be there. I totally disagree. Um.
Tiffany, on the, and I think a lot of great work on even the year one activities. Could we get like quarterly, a update on the progress, because I think if we go back to trusty comments on what is the highest, all the height of these letter detail here? Because there's a lot of great things in flight that the staff is working on. And I think it would help us to kind of update on just like the progress.
We can do the a type of a PowerPoint quarterly, but we had already planned like within that monthly report as we're working up and. We'll figure out some kind of reference and parentheses to the plan. So that when we are doing the website we design, you know.
Or even just a little, you know, this is what you can follow.
Yes.
Yes, so this is column, this column that's still making the holiday during your journey.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? How many new employees do you foresee for everything that's going to be happening? Hmm. Good question. Yeah.
I mean, I think we we got to find that balance of full-time staff where we need where we're in, um part-time staff and. And um, I mean, it's real. Back volunteers, new fill interns, but also realignment of. Staff who needs to, I think, for this kind of business place. And you could be, yeah, yeah. And then wait for them and see how that affects or breeds out staff on thing.
So kind of rearranging what you have first. But you're gonna load them down at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. One, glad you brought that up. Um, so I did, I was able to talk to a couple of people and they did express that there is specifically for. A full-time personnel. There was a person that left last February. He was full-time, hasn't ever replaced. And so that person position is still needed. Um. Uh, the part-time personnel, she um expressed to me today that she, if full-time is good, she would like to be full-time. Um, I've been in the library at home just about every other day. I've seen a couple of things happen. Um, the services. Um, you know, they get pretty swamped and so yes, I want to throw that out there now. I don't know how it's going to affect the budget because I thought the budget was on the agenda of the station. So that's going to have to be considered, um especially if it is a possibility for Z to come full-time and then. So basically it sounds like he's saying they need to take her full-time and another full-time security staff and there's some issues with uh custodians. Um, so before I got on board, a couple of people I was here with commented on the condition of the men's bathroom. And uh I don't go in there, so I I didn't see it. But um I'm not going to be gross, but it was kind of gross in there and there isn't. A custodian on the weekend or there's only one on Saturdays. It sounds like you need at least two more custodians, two more maintenance people. That's that's the dialogue that I had. So I want to say that right now, since you're talking about.
Week, there's one Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah.
All the time because there were ones that I'm up the door and everything ready for the community to come in.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. That's the feedback I got. Um. Maybe we can talk about it further. Um, I'm still learning the rules of the game of course. So if if we have to push it to somebody else that can understand, that's fine. I don't want to bring it up. Um. Oh, another question. The literacy grant that stopped last year, it was a literacy specific department in in a guy. They didn't give it a move though.
There there's a literacy grant that was um is from the Illinois State Library. And part of reimagining the department and creating adult educate bilingual adult education coordinator. That also serves on the service staff can interface more with staff and build out programs. We um are working towards that kind of a model. The grant that we had was. Um, I was gonna say rather onerous in a lot of the um reporting that we needed to do and some of. We just felt that the services were better aligned to kind of bring all things into a department under one umbrella because it was very isolated. Um, not being tracked and didn't have the impact that it had had in the past. Um, so those, that money is being um taken in from other foundations and other funding sources. And library budget. So. We got it through without not having that particular one. The Illinois State Library has other literacy programs and grants. Family literacy and other activities that aren't um that regimented.
Do you want to know it's about seven thirty? So I'm gonna be respectful of our staff time that's here involved with us. So. Um, are there any other opposing comments or questions for the members for staff?
Yeah, great job. Turn the queue. Amelia posted notes.
And for reading like the hand waiting of all. I'm very excited to go from realization to actualization here. So give it up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments, uh strategic plan update? Just want to give staff a chance to step up.
The words weren't good.
But like interactive activities for older kids? You can you can read that.
I know there was something shared about this thing nine through twelve downstairs with the early learners in middle school ages. Um, personally, I'm a little bit concerned about that too, considering that's coming over to high school, middle school. Um. Now, I'm not saying that we can't, I'm not saying it can't happen. I'm just wondering. You know, how feasible that would be um in consideration to families and and some children that come under company. You know, being in the same area with um high school students, um and how would that be managed if that in fact does happen?
I'll take it out. So in general, team librarian space is it's most of those, there's it's not really the high school. There's. But middle school, maybe a freshman, it's not the ten, twelve.
True. But then it sounds like there is an enticement that's going to take place for high schoolers.
Yeah, that would be a smaller group normally, most type of areas.
Yeah. Now, like I said, I'm just wondering um how it would be managed if it's gonna have, how how that's gonna be managed for sure because I mean, I don't know. How many people actually teach.
Yeah. So physically the state, that's part of why there would, you kind of, you kind of saw the preview, the the whole hallway is going to be like blown out. So that there's sightlines and there would be like probably like a podium or temporary desk for certain times like after school. So there would be staff in the room. Because I think what you're alluding to is like too broad of age ranges being unsupervised or something like that. So that's, those are all intentionally designed. Um, for those reasons. And the other thing is all the study rooms downstairs will be glass like the ones up here for sort of the same.
Now, the high schoolers would be able to use downstairs and study rooms upstairs. That's right. Still correct. Okay. Right. And a lot of times that high school age, um are leaving the materials up here and not in adult department, in manga and they're using. Computers and they're finding those spaces where they can work collaboratively or study and. John is correct in that. Um. It's generally middle school and the middle school collection is already downstairs and from and that expert who is a team librarian who has that training. And uh team development and needs and programming, um and harnessing them as volunteers or mentors is obeyed to um. Build that and and, you know, work with the schools. We want our staff to have that relationship and build that relationship with them. As they age.
Well, at this point, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Everyone's prepared with that. And then the, just for everyone's information, the strategic plan will still be on our committee of the whole agenda for. So our consent agenda is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting on February twenty first, approval of the check detail for February eighth, twenty twenty four. Approval of board policies, the information services policy that's going to be the whole and the report of the stand committee of the whole. You all rock tall?
Steve?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Happy?
Yes.
First up.
Yeah.
Uh, remind them.
Yes.
Yo, uh, next up is the executive director's report.
Well, I was going to be excited to announce um the Schreiber update that I heard. I I was like, I saw that opportunity and Cindy put it into your report. So that just came to us today and was just a really thoughtful approach. They they said that. They thought about all of that with their their smaller community partners who have leaner staffs with leaner budgets and to. Put out their new grant offering procedure might be harder for some agencies. So to give us that three years now, we can have three years to develop that. Hundred thousand dollar garage or or whatever it is that are looking to be the parameters for their grant offering. So that's really exciting. Um. I thought I was gonna have a chance to have a fundraiser update. I don't know about tickets at the moment, but um.
Sixty-eight tickets and that includes all the tickets that were included with the sponsorship. So you have forty tickets with two sponsors, right?
And then what?
And we know, yes, those are, those are kind of your handheld deliverer to uh send to people. We did that also for the city council members. So that um they can cash out and update. We do have um have reached over the fifty thousand dollar mark in just cash donations. Yeah. I'm not going to guess on the income, but a lot of ticket, ticket to the Genesee, tickets to the SAG, Chicago Fire, uh golf outing, wine tasting, lots of um. Gift cards and promised gift baskets. Um, yeah, dinner theater. Oh, so far. Almost three thousand dollars and and we have some food donations too for the event. Um. I know that all of us have people that have promised to get tickets and are just kind of getting that link out there to people and and we're contacting people. To um purchase their tickets. So that is going strongly. Um, I had mentioned the staff meetings with the year in my report, which I was going to mention. And just that the stats we saw really strong increases in door comp program attendance, wifi and computer use. So it definitely has been. Basier. Um, the again, like the yoga program, the Lotteria, the Vino at the branch um are really getting a lot of traction. We're seeing more adults. Seniors in regularly for those programs. Um, and then the customer, the van wrap. So that's a big update.
Next up is our whole business, which is the approval of the this and gear twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
So the budget has been in the work packet previously. It has had no changes since we said we would have to hit on to the city. Um. John just led the city department budget reveal today and gave us our big budget packet, which I immediately came over to verify. Is this the same that we sent them or did they? Uh, not give us our full request, but it is exactly the same. And um. But we took those. So if you approve it today, then Michelle is working on distributing those departmental budget to the managers. So that they can work with their staff and do ready big goal majors.
To be transparent, there was extremely minor changes. It was just rounding.
They gave them like.
So we had things with like ninety-five dollars or, you know, so it was extremely minor. I'm just rounding dollars. So the ending number is a little, you know, different by a couple hundred dollars. It was our favor. So that's the only difference that you're.
I'm making motion that we approve the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
One second.
I'm curious to the stuff that I mentioned before with the additional um. That looks for security. I mean, um. To have with support security, I live um like what how. What's the what exactly the procedure to get that like the feasibility of that evaluated and added to budget? As quickly as possible, so then y'all y'all need that security at the end of the day.
So we do have safety hours for all hours, the library is open, we have departmental managers. We have a safety manual and training that we're continuing to work on. Um a person that was full time that was overlap, not necessarily during busy hours, just overlap. Um so we do have room in the budget um for staffing, but those were key targets in terms of school outreach. Team services, A, part time, some kind of small amount of hours in terms of facilities and systems. On that word is approved, we can still figure out a way to get get it if necessary, basically without having to delay this.
So more or less the salary line is if we approve that, that's the salary line. And then we have a union contract toward those bucks.
And I apologize, I I know I'm fresh on the block. I am kind of being kind of burdened on it because it was expressing me as very urgent, serious thing. Um like I said, I've seen stuff since I've been here, you know, as far as security is needed. Um and I would think, you know, as a person, it wasn't necessarily security, but in a security type occupation. If someone that is in that field advises that they need extra staff, then you should probably listen to that person. So. Like help me out, like, you know, I'm learning as I go, what do we need to to get this adjusted, but like.
Can I make a recognition perhaps since we've heard your comments that staff can assess that or even come back and you can hold the answer to the response or my end of the comment? And then I think this discussion is about budget, if they're maybe that are operational. To me, that's what we have the leadership and the work of staff to take trust these comments and come back and answer your questions. With a comment, a plan, or whatever it is that you need to do for us.
Response pending committee of all.
And are we not, okay?
All in favor, well, do a roll call though, sorry.
Yes. So can I?
Yes.
Any issues?
Yes.
No, I don't.
Yes.
Krista? Rebecca?
Yes.
Steve? Amy, guys, John?
Yes.
Budget is approved.
Uh next up is new budget, a business and its approval of a Everbright mini purchase. Mini being the brand, not the.
Mini being the model.
But um we thought we'd take this time to hand Amy give an update on maybe LC and purchases. Um we have made a lot of um purchases and steps forward. Most of those are under that hundred dollar threshold, us didn't come here, but this one is, so.
Yeah, so I'll just give basically this the same current update that I have just kind of been giving to staff like recently in the past or two. Um so most of you are aware, um the post-flop, we conducted a massive patron survey. Both children and adults, the stickers, the parent survey. And the staff themselves, we did several brainstorming sessions and we took all of that data and gathered it to move forward with our plans. And so a staff team with representatives mostly from children's admin and a couple other just key staff from all different departments. Met with our architects in early February to discuss all of that feedback from staff, patrons, you the board, the strategic. And surveys and everything, and we shared ideas and brought the priorities to the architects to focus the project. Um so based on that meeting, product, product, architecture and design, which is our architecture firm, put together our tentative floor plan for us. Which includes both custom and non-custom commercial items. So the non-custom items are things we can purchase directly from just commercial vendors on our own right away. Without a custom length design or no work um involved. So those are things like a light table, a magnet wall, a reversible doo-blow, train table, benches for a baby garden. Um a mirror, pull-up bar for the baby garden, um different interactive playboards and book displays. Couple of things have already come in, part of the magnet board and those really cute butterfly mirror and pull-up board. So if you ever you want to see those, a couple of them come in. So those are all things that we're using different grant funds and remaining funds from this fiscal year to try to purchase. Um so these items are going to take weeks to months to trickle in and then they'll be installed in chunks by Edward, Dorfley. So like one of the things is the magnet wall, that like he just drills in, so we didn't have to like wait on it, we can get it done super. The custom items will be discussed in all department meeting with the architects, probably pretty soon, they're off like designing it and then they're going to bring it back to us. These elements include a large playhouse, a yard, a tree installation, a play market and the arc cabinet. So that's over all the things that really kind of destroyed in the blood and some more interesting things. Um so children's department staff will input to help the architects, the color, style, signage, art and more. And those custom items will take longer to create and install because they're custom designed items. Um we're also going to be working together with the children's department and marketing to plan all of our bilingual signage, art, hanging materials. Parent prom signs, other ways to support parent engagement, hand up, book lists, yeah, we're having a bunch of new initiatives to go along with the space. And so we already have a lot of ideas from library, the library visits we went on, the things we've just wanted or found in different places, magazines. And things that we've done here in the past that we want to do again. Um so staff have received basically like a positive talking point list to continue to let patrons know that the ELC. See spaces of work in Congress, which is taking a long time, we're thanking them for their patience and understanding and that we have gathered all this feedback from all of our sources mentioned above. Um and are currently actively working with our architects to redesign the permanent space. So in the meantime, some elements will be installed as they come in because we don't want to like delay anything for an order reason if it doesn't have to be delayed. Um when the final plans of the custom stuff has been created, we'll also have stuff images like probably like large posters. Um in the ELC from the architects to display around the space, which will, I think, invigorate and generate positive buzz in the um ELC area too. So patrons can know even more, we just we don't have that yet, but I think we will soon. Um so thank you all so much for your feedback and kind of helping us in it get this exciting project rolling. And yeah, I think the Everbright is the one thing that was over so far. The custom items will be.
So Amy put a video on there to give you an idea of what it is, the endless stacks and a lot of libraries and museums have those light brights. I don't know if you've seen them with the baby tags and we were like eh. It it is really bulky and it comes out from the wall and then make that space narrow plus those are just they're really heavy.
That's right.
And they, yeah, but um the Everbright can do all the colors with the rainbow, you can make designs with it. Again, you can use prompts, you can spell letters with it, there's a lot of fun and creative group activities that can happen with it also.
I've uh moved that we approved the Everbright mini purchase that's presented.
Right, do a roll call though.
Okay. Uh Steve? Yes. Me, yes, Gerona? Yes. Uh Kathy?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Any others? John?
Yes.
Everbright mini, we need to agree.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's that that's the one. Yeah, did you see, yeah.
Why the mini size over there?
Oh.
No, it's just the length.
It's one is like long and narrow, one is, yeah, one was way higher and yeah, like just the same.
Five four.
Yeah.
Also, I just didn't know why.
Right, the highs like.
What we want to do is because it will give us a chance to have that same kind of. Three to four foot space next to it, add some other kinds of of interactive.
Yeah, we were thinking instead of having one big lights thing, we could have like the light thing, which is like pretty big and then other thing too. Like the magnet wall is pretty big, each panel is like it's gonna be the other side of the wall. I mean, I can like kind of, we don't really have like a good picture of this, we're like in our. Yeah, but some of the toys have come upstairs, so if you walk out through the upstairs, I can show you the the magnet thing has these like. You know, you basically make like the overdrawings and it props and it's really, really cool, yeah.
So we're gonna uh audit the presentation at the beginning, was the presentation on the audit, but uh if someone makes a motion, it'd be to approve the audit. Well, yes, by the actions.
Um when is that?
Oh, sorry, we're uh the motion is to approve the audit.
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Uh Gerona?
Yes.
So yes, Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the audit was approved and.
So we're good in order, uh just a quick note, uh Brails, the region across Illinois, um library system. Is uh having open positions for their board for the three public library trustees that were just now. So I'll email that to everyone if anyone's interested, get nominated to do more board work. For the northern half of Illinois. No. And speaking of nominations, I emailed uh everyone that has their term ending in this summer. So I haven't come back to the call with you, but I'll. Um and that's all I have from my report.
Um backup on your.
My actual budget report for the government? Oh, sorry, skip that one, thank you.
Thanks. Don't worry.
Um budget's actual that Steve brought up, we are um watching purchase orders and will stay within budget, I'm wrapping up the current fiscal year. If anyone has any concerns with the number, so.
Um do the banks get switched?
So I um we have our four CDs um active now. We're still waiting on a couple of our vendors to switch um from depositing like the, you know, when they pay by credit card.
Yeah.
Um or our um a couple of vendors paid the cobra to us, they're still depositing. Um even though we keep requesting to to change it, they're still depositing it in the um current, the older banks. So once the I see that those deposits are moving to the new accounts. Then um Tiffany will be able to go and close the account with a cashier's check and deposit it into the new account. So at this time, um very minimal activity in the new ones, it's up for the four CDs that were opened in March.
Thank you, I'm done.
Um so that's the the budget's actual on the profit and loss comparison, um February this year to last year. Things to note in um payroll, um March has been known as that third payroll, but our payroll comes out the Thursday before payroll hits their account. And the month ended Thursday was the twenty ninth, Friday was the first, so we actually accrued or incurred those payroll costs in February. So that's why um your uh salary related is so high, because it helps keep bills instead of two. Admin expenses, um legal fees were significantly less, that was wonderful. Uh supplies of last year were much higher because of replacement of um in-use things like the headphones, uh headset covers. And um our company that covers the faxes, last year were charging us once every six months. This year, fiscal year, they're charging a quarter. So that's why um your supply fees, you know, were higher last year. Library materials are higher because we are paying for hotspots now. Um so that was there, marketing, the timing of the spring newsletter was um last year was in April, this year we got our bill in in February. And capital was the purchase of the new van, so that's um the breakdown of the loss comparison of year from last year to this year. Did anyone have any questions? Um and then the banking association chat is there for the review to see how we're doing um the assignment here.
Any questions? Thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Steve.
Uh any communication for council?
No, he just said he is always standing by, he may be called during the meeting, he has his time hold in. No other.
Any trustee comments? There's an interesting comments. Thank you. All right, uh all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much, the meeting has adjourned at seven.